Okay, we're gonna go and call the meeting to order at 6:39. See how much trouble we can cause with the chancellor not here. And keep going. First off, we have a report out from closed session.
There is no report from closed session.
Next, we have invocation led by myself and then a pledge of allegiance from trustee Wright. It goes without saying that it is with heavy hearts that we meet tonight with all of the events of the last few weeks. It's being commonly said that we are all French, but it's also important we say that we're all Lebanese, we are all Syrian, we're all Israeli, we are all Palestinian, we're all Kenyan, we're all anti-terrorists, and we're against senseless violence against innocents. And for that, we take a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have recognition resolution for Dr. Kara Street, who was celebrated at the Orange County Teacher of the Year Dinner.
We'll wait until they get up to the podium. Resolution, Dr. Kara Street, 2016 Orange County Teacher of the Year. Whereas Dr. Kara Street, a full-time biology instructor at Saddleback College since 2005, is Orange County's Professor of the Year for 2016. And whereas the Orange County Teachers of the Year Program provides recognition for outstanding teachers in Orange County, and whereas Dr. Kara Street was honored with her fellow Teacher of the Year finalists at a gala on November the 10th where she will be awarded $15,000 provided by the Dr. James Hines Foundation. And whereas Dr. Kara Street students commend her brilliant mind, honesty, and sense of humor, and whereas Dr. Kara Street shows true devotion to her students who appreciate that she connects with them by sharing her own life experiences, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Dr. Kara Street, the 2016 Orange County Teacher of the Year. Please take a roll call.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Witt.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mammon.
Aye.
I'd like to say a couple words.
Thank you. Most of you were there to support me, and I really greatly appreciate that. And next time that we want to break bread together, can you just let me know in advance? And we'll have a much smaller scale. And don't make me dance for my dinner again. Thank you for showing up.
Do we have any slips pulled? No? Okay. Moving on to board reports. We'll start with trustee Wang.
Well, it was certainly my pleasure to have participated with my fellow trustees, most of my fellow trustees, to attend the Teacher of the Year competition and to honor our own Dr. Kara Street. And I have to say that one of the high, besides meeting your family and friends, one of the highlights certainly was watching you, Dr. Street, dance with Mickey and Minnie on the stage. You really had some great moves there. Other things that I managed to attend, I did go to the first half of the game to watch the Saddleback Gauchos beat the Golden West Rustlers. Very exciting game. Fortunately, trustee Wright was there for the second half of the game to cheer us on for the rest of the victory. And other than that, just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving this year. And we should all just count the many blessings that we have and think about those that are less fortunate than us. Thank you.
Trustee Jay.
On Thursday, November the 12th, I visited the Saddleback College campus to see the veterans activities. I was so impressed with the portion of the quad which was the field of flags. It was very touching and very beautiful. I was drawn to the obstacle course competition which gave insight into the lives of our troops. It was fun, very interesting, and I was able to pick up a bulletproof vest. Wow, was that heavy? I don't see how women can wear them. I talked to a handsome veteran student. He told me he was so pleased with the veterans program at Saddleback College, and I quote him. He said, "They don't leave us lacking for anything." He also told me it was well-known that Saddleback had the best veterans program around. I was so pleased to hear that because we're so close to Camp Pendleton. I also watched the vets teaching students how to pick up and carry a person. I learned that there was a special technique to this. The instructor was a female. I then attended a luncheon featuring one book, one college, veterans issue, and the Saddleback community. The book Fives and Twenty-Fives was discussed with a panel of five Marine veterans who were students at Saddleback College. Excerpts out of the book were read to the students and the veterans were to comment. The discussion was very informative. These Marines all looked very young and did not want to be singled out as veterans, especially in their classes. They were trying very hard to assimilate into the general student population. I was thrilled with this event. I learned so much and was so glad I attended and loved the discussion on the wonderful book Fives and Twenty-Fives by Michael Petrie.
Thank you. So I was able to attend the veterans ceremony at IVC due to its proximity and me getting a break from my classes for a few hours there to do that. It was very well put together as it usually is, and the singer was amazing. You may have heard a rumor that I got emotional and broke down a little. It's all rumor. But with that, I will repeat what was said about the Teacher of the Year Dinner. It was entertaining, to say the least, on so many levels. It was very nice meeting your family, very nice meeting the student who nominated you and put you in that position in the first place. No, you can't repeat three years in a row. You'll have to alternate with somebody else. But from what we hear, you could very easily could. And then, again, also, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you then.
Kara, congratulations. Everyone has said everything I think needs to be said. Well done, well earned. It was nice to sit next to your sister and brother-in-law. Nice people. They're very proud of you as well. Attended the OCBC Economic Forecast, which was generally a more positive report, I would say. And also had a chance to stop by the Lariat and their open house. Nice to see that they had a good turnout, a big supporter of a robust and free media, and seems like they're moving in the right direction. Had a lot of pizza, too, and they had a lot of leftover pizza, Todd, so could have had more people stop by, but I thought it was a pretty good showing. And then lastly, I thank you trustee Prendergast for the invocation about what happened on Friday in Paris. I think President Burnett sent something out today. Aujourd'hui, nous sommes tous Parisiens. I did spend a lot of time in France myself, studied French for a number of years, and I think your point, yes, it means we're all Parisians, but I think the trustee Prendergast's point, everyone was impacted. Happened to be in Paris, unfortunately, it could have been anywhere. And so we can't stop these things from happening, unfortunately. But as an institution of education, we can make a lot of progress towards at least educating our population so that maybe in small part, events like this may not happen, or at least less likelihood in the future. And happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I also attended Kara Street's dinner at Disneyland Hotel. And Kara, you certainly deserve this award. You're a wonderful teacher. I've had the privilege of evaluating you a number of years, so I know how great you are, and congratulations. I just want to point out that there was a full-page article in the Orange County Register about the Teacher of the Year, and Kara's picture is here. Congratulations again, Kara. I was blessed to attend the Fourth Annual IVC and Saddleback College Student Research Symposium. This was on Saturday, November the 7th, 2015. Had a chance to walk around and talk to students at the poster session. Wonderful posters, and some of those students were very well-informed and know what they're talking about, so I had a good time there. I also attended the IVC Veterans Day Celebration, as alluded to by our president, and I also toured the IVC Veterans Center, and they had a big cake there, a big chocolate cake honoring the 240th birthday of the Marine Corps. And so they gave us a great big piece of chocolate cake, so it was well deserved. I also attended on Thursday, November the 12th, the District Services Road Tour here at Saddleback College for a couple hours. And I just want to congratulate and thank the District Services for their outstanding program, their PowerPoint presentations and so forth. I wanted, I did attend the second half of the conference championship football game at Saddleback College. As has been told by trustee Wang, Saddleback won 46 to 32. We thought there for a while they might not do that, but they came through. I just wanted to just point out that they are going to be playing this next Saturday, Riverside College here at Saddleback College. Saddleback finished as the outright champions of the National Division Southern League. And as a result, if they can win the next two games, both games will be here at Saddleback College. So, well deserved. And so Friday, this, I mean, this next Saturday, the 21st of November, at 6 o'clock here at Saddleback College. Let me also wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Have a good time.
Trustee Milchiker.
Thanks. First, I spoke at Laguna Woods TV. The trustees have an opportunity to speak, we take turns to speak at Laguna Woods TV, and later on, that is shown on YouTube. So you have an opportunity to look at it in a few days to see what we said about our programs and services at the college. And it's always wonderful to be able to talk about the colleges. And I, too, was delighted to be able to attend the Teacher of the Year Ceremony at the Disneyland Hotel where our own professor, Kara Street, was honored not only as our Professor of the Year, but one of the five top professors of the year in Orange County. And this was, so many of the trustees were there because we're so proud of our professors and we're so proud of Professor Street, and we wanted to be there to cheer her on. Her family was there, her dean was there, her president, her chancellor, her fellow teachers, and everyone commented on what a fabulous professor she was. And I'm a biology professor, too, so we were able to compare a little, compare some notes. But I never won this award, so she really deserves it. We actually have had other professors in our district win the Top Professor of the Year Award Ceremony. A number of years ago, Saddleback College Professor Larry Perez won as one of the top professors of the year. And a few years before that, Irvine Valley College Professor Frank Marmalacho won as Professor of the Year. So we really have a history of having top professors, and we're very, very proud of Just so you know, I'll tell you just briefly, the Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony was actually founded at Saddleback College. Sue Frank Gross was Jim Hines's student, and she was so, she had her life changed by him. She felt like her life changed. She went into a whole different profession, and she and Bill Gross founded the Professor of the Year Ceremony in his name and started a foundation with $100,000. And they finance it every single year. So we're very, very proud that a wonderful award ceremony highlighting teachers all over our Orange County started here at Saddleback College. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
I'll be brief. Once again, Dr. Street, I cannot tell you how proud I was. I have heard the nursing graduates applaud you time and time again at the penning ceremony, and I was so privileged to be there, to see you receive such an award, and to see you smile, and to see you so happy. I'm glad I was there. I also want to thank those departments that sent me this outrageously huge, big, and I mean huge, basket welcoming onto the board. I was very touched. I haven't sent my thank yous yet because I just got it, but I am ready to write, I am ready to highlight, I am ready to use bags, I am ready to read, I am ready to go to the theater, I am ready to go to any athletic event. I'm ready. Thank you very much.
All right. Student trustee Mammon.
I would also just like to congratulate Professor Street. Wonderful job, really shows the excellence of our colleges and our district. And I would also like to thank trustee Prendergast for his wonderful invocation. Thank you.
All right. Chancellor's report.
As usual, I like to, in my report, highlight some items on the agenda that I think are of particular interest. So tonight, there are two I'd like to mention. One is a discussion item. It's item 4.1, and it's a presentation by both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College on alternative energy strategies and the use of reclaimed water. These are topics that have been brought up in various venues throughout the district, and one of them was in the listening sessions last spring. And so we scheduled a presentation for tonight to cover those two topics. In an action item, item 6.1, you're going to hear a report from the two colleges on the Student Equity Plan and their proposals for this year for addressing ways to increase access, course completion, ESL, basic skills, completion, and transfers, and degrees and certificates. So it covers the full gamut, and at the end of the presentation, they'll be seeking approval by the board of that plan so it can be sent into the state.
All right. Look forward to those. And then now we move on to college presidents' reports. Who'd like to go first? Dr. Rockmore, grab the mic.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to talk a little bit about ANAPZI. And as you know, IVC was recently awarded a $1.5 million Minority Serving Institution Grant, MSI it's called. This particular grant is known as ANAPZI, and that stands for Asian American, Native American, and Pacific Islander Serving Institution. Before we got the grant, we had to apply to qualify for the grant, which we did, and then once we were notified that we were qualified, we went ahead and put the application in. Additionally, IVC's student body includes a very high proportion of Asian American students, about 40%. While only 27% of IVC students identify uniquely as Asian American, our research office was able to determine that about 90% of our multi-ethnic students identify either with multiple Asian ethnicities such as Chinese and Vietnamese, or with an Asian ethnicity in combination with one or more of other ethnicities such as Korean or even white. Our plans for these funds include establishing an intercultural center on the IVC campus. The center will focus on providing support to students who are interested in science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics, which is otherwise known as STEAM, to work and meet with disciplined faculty mentors and peer mentors. We will be using ANAPZI funds to staff and to purchase furniture and equipment for the center. We'll be deploying several state-of-the-art 3D visualization workstations which will allow students to work with rotatable, interactive holographic images of their designs and artwork. I see my time's running out quickly. So the grant will also allow us to disaggregate the Asian American category into other constituents, which is going beyond what we normally would get from the state chancellor's office, and that will help us serve more students. So in summary, we do have the opportunity to apply for this grant at the end, and oftentimes it is an ongoing process. Most of the colleges that have it have been on for a number of years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Burnett.
Good evening. In keeping with tonight's science theme at Saddleback, with, obviously beginning with Dr. Kara Street, who's our biology professor, would like to invite the trustees, our chancellor, on a hard hat tour at the next board meeting at 4 o'clock beforehand on December 14th. Hard hat tour, of course, of our new sciences building. And you'll hear more about that over the coming weeks. In addition, I know it's a little bit in advance, but we'd like to let you know that in September of 2016, we are working right now with our faculty, with our dean, and with others on having a grand opening of the science building. That will be the first full Saddleback building in 25 years. So it'll be a very big event for all of us to have it. And it's also a phenomenal building, and we're just very excited to have all of you come on December 14th to get a preview of the building. In fact, you will all be the first to get a preview of the building. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Next, we have ASG reports. Start with ASIVC.
AS Saddleback. All right.
Let's start with Saddleback first. You have the mic.
Sounds good. So first of all, to those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Pontus Goransson, and I am sitting in for William Vessetti today, and I'm the ASG vice president. So last week was Veterans Week, and ASG and the Veterans Student Council organized an amazing event. We had a great turnout of students and a barbecue and a cake-cutting ceremony where the oldest Marine and the youngest Marine cut a cake together. We managed to raise over $600 through that event, which will be used for scholarships. We also processed over $20,000 worth of special topic grants that will be used to increase student involvement. The different departments and projects that were awarded will have until the end of spring to implement their proposals. We are also working on a few upcoming projects. For example, International Week is this week, and we will have a great event that will engage students, and especially international students. This not only will allow them to connect more with each other, but we will also be able to hear them out about any concerns or any suggestions that they might have. And another thing that we are working on right now is the Thanksgiving food drive, and we encourage everyone to donate canned foods and turkeys. There are bins in nearly all of the different departments at Saddleback, but you could also bring your donations to the Student Development Office, which is in SSC 110. Any donation would be greatly appreciated by the families that rely heavily on Saddleback to put this event together. And furthermore, tomorrow is Family Night, and ASG will be hosting different workshops where everyone can hear about the students' great experience here at Saddleback. And prosperous students and parents will all be able to ask any questions that they might have. And lastly, I just want to reemphasize the student involvement at Saddleback, which is one of our main goals this year. And I just hope that you keep that in mind when you make any important decisions around here. Besides from that, thank you, and I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay. ASIVC.
Good evening, trustee members. So to begin with, after the last meeting, we, my senate members sat down, and we actually were able to fund pro-IVC a large sum amount, and actually Timothy Jamal did respond to the chain of email, which was great to have him talk about it. Applications for next semester are up, and they'll be due January 22nd. We gave a little bit more time for students to apply, since it's going to be a really hectic couple of weeks. Also, we're working on an event for Cram Week. We plan on getting things just to allow students to relax, like the week before finals. We are also working on getting feedback for the smoking policy. We are planning to open up surveys and ask students regarding what they believe, if they believe the banning policy was necessary or not. We're also having a team-building activity this Saturday. We are mandating that everybody on ASG were going out to Boomers in Irvine, so that should be fun. Another retreat's also coming up this February. In my past report, I did say we did have our first student leadership retreat, and it was great. Everyone enjoyed it, and so we decided to create another one for next semester. It will be going on from, I believe, February 5th to 7th. Also, finally, we were actually invited, ASG was invited to participate in something called a Student Leadership Development Transcript. So they are working on allowing every student leader to have what they accomplished actually placed on their transcript at the end of the year, which we believe was definitely beneficial, and so we're working on that, too. I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a point of personal privilege for trustee Jamal.
Thank you, thank you, President Prendergast. I just wanted to, I forgot to mention it in my board report, what a generous gesture the ASIVC made for the IVC Foundation. I want people to understand what they did. They provided over $53,000 to the Foundation to help fund scholarships at Irvine Valley College. And I mean, I was pretty amazed with what you did there. Thank you for doing that. Incredibly generous gift that's going to go a long way to meeting student scholarship needs at IVC. Thank you very much. Thanks for the personal privilege.
No problem. Next, we have board request reports. We do have one from trustee Witt. Specific request for the report is campus safety, the roles of campus police, and student health center within the Saddleback Community College, or the South Orange County Community College District, Saddleback College, and IVC. The reason for the request is basically throughout our nation, we are seeing more and more violence on our campuses. What planning, training, support services, and resources does Saddleback College have in place to protect our campus, what may we be lacking? So I will entertain a motion to approve the request for report in a second.
Move approval?
Second. A motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Jamal, and a request to speak from trustee Wang.
My recollection is that on the request for board support, it normally does go to administration first in order to evaluate what sort of time is going to be involved with developing the report, and then it comes back to us for approval. So I would ask perhaps that my fellow trustees consider following that process.
Okay. I know we had the formal request, but I didn't know if this went to the district or not. So that's the only reason I, it hasn't come to you yet? Oh, okay. Well, then I will withdraw that until the next meeting then. But now we know it's out there.
Yeah, and I seconded it for the purpose of discussion, and I share your perspective on it.
I do believe that's a very valuable report that should come back to us and will support it when it does.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had the impression when I got it that it was already had gone through that process.
TJ, TJ Prendergast?
Yes.
Also, I think we should mention IVC because it was just mentioned Saddleback.
I did.
They said the district.
When I verbally.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you.
You should talk to the administration.
Okay. So then now, we're at our natural. So then now we're at our natural break while our presenters for four-point-one get ready. If anybody needs to use that natural break to go away, this is your opportunity to disappear.
Are we done breaking?
I think we're done breaking.
Okay.
You can go ahead and start.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, for this opportunity to present to you this evening our practices on energy, alternative energy strategies, and water conservation. We've had many years of experience with these kinds of projects, and we're really grateful for the opportunity to be able to present some of these to you tonight. So thank you for asking for this report. We'll just get right into it. Recent state initiatives have highlighted the need for sustainable enhancements. South Orange County Community College District takes the stewardship of our resources seriously, and we have a very long history of improvements that have resulted in energy savings and water conservation. This report will describe recent legislation and district-wide sustainable improvements that are both in place and planned. So the first of two initiatives that we'll be discussing this evening are the alternative energy strategies. And related to this, I'd like to share a little bit about Proposition thirty-nine. The Proposition thirty-nine included an allowance in that bill that funded projects that would provide employment to sustainable-type projects and also then result in energy savings. Now, the education sector was called upon to demonstrate the results of this measure, and in community colleges in particular have practices in place that allow for measurability on these kinds of projects. So later in this presentation, we will share our energy savings with you and that we have had and that we will continue to have as a result of grants that were provided to the colleges by Proposition thirty-nine. Additionally, the district has a policy of incorporating energy-saving measures in our design processes on our projects, and we will share a few of these with you later tonight. The second area of focus that we have and will discuss this evening is water conservation. We've had a lot of opportunities as of late to better understand the severity of the drought and the need for water conservation. And there's really a need for a major shift in consciousness around this, and that's been responded to by Governor Brown with his twenty-five percent water reduction. But in addition to that, the education facilities in the state of California have been asked to go one step further, and there have been measures put in place that result in additional landscape and irrigation modifications. Now, interestingly enough, here in Orange County, we're like the shining star of water conservation in that we have non-potable water infrastructure, nearly the entire countywide. Both of our colleges have taken advantage of use, using this non-potable water in a number of applications, and we're going to be presenting some of those applications to you later in this presentation, but that's not enough. Just because with, with the non-potable water, what happens then is the colleges are exempt from these added requirements that other educational facilities in the state are required to adhere to. We don't, we don't think we should be exempt. So we're in a step, and our facilities department lines right up with what the state requirements are in modifying our irrigation and landscape projects around the colleges. What I'd like to say about that, that these measures have been supported and enhanced through partnerships with the faculty who are using some of the drought-tolerant landscaping that are in place now as teaching tools for our students. So tonight, we will hear more about district-wide efforts from Mary Opal, who is a project manager with District Services, from John Ozerovich, who is the director of facilities with Saddleback College, and from Jeff Herblut, who is the interim director over at IVC. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mary.
Good evening. I'm actually going to address things in reverse that Brandy introduced them to you. I'm actually going to talk about water conservation first. As you know, we're in a state of emergency, and the governor has enacted the executive order for the twenty-five percent reduction through February of two thousand and sixteen, which is based on the two thousand and thirteen water usages. In addition to that, the Division of the State Architect, through whom we take all of our construction and design projects, is also putting in new requirements for all of our projects as well. They're currently in the review phase. They just went through their forty-five-day public review for that, which ended November ninth, and they're also in review of their model, model water-efficient landscape ordinance called MWOLO. So those are two of the things that we're working through right now in all of our projects that are in design. So as you know, all of our projects, we design them for sustainability. We design and construct them. So we've designed them with LEED criteria in mind, and what LEED is, is leadership in energy and environmental design. So a lot of our projects that we've already built have been designed with this in, in mind. So the original buildings at ATEP, the IVC Police and Warehouse Facility, the IVC Bistic Building, the IVC A-four-hundred Liberal Arts Building, which is currently in construction, the ATEP IVC First Building, which is currently in design, the Saddleback ATAS renovation, which is in design, the Saddleback LRC renovation, which is complete, and the Saddleback Fine Arts HVAC renovation, which is in design as well. Two projects, specifically the IVC Life Sciences Project and the Saddleback College Sciences Building, are actually LEED-certified gold. So what that means is a LEED scorecard. There are a hundred and ten points to be able to get LEED certification through the United States Green Building Council, USGBC. So in order to become gold, you need sixty to seventy-nine points in the areas of integrated process, location, transportation, sustainable sites, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, indoor environmental quality, innovation, and regional priority. And a lot of this is the use of the reclaimed water. What types of materials that we're using? Are we, are we using recycled materials? Are we using local materials? Are we buying them local and not having them transported in? So one project specifically, the ATEP, the original complex there was built and designed with LEED criteria in mind. The new building that we're currently designing is going to be LEED gold equivalent. So in that building, we're putting in fifty kilowatts of photovoltaic power that will provide approximately fifteen to twenty percent of power for the building. We're going to be putting in LED light fixtures in all of the building, the exterior areas, the parking, and all of the roadways. We're going to be doing dual plumbing on the buildings. We're going to be actually using reclaimed water for the toilet fixtures and also using drought-tolerant native plantings with reclaimed water to furthermore reduce our usage of the reclaimed water. As Brandy talked about, energy efficiency, Prop thirty-nine. Proposition thirty-nine was voted on by the voters in two thousand and twelve with out-of-state income taxes. So basically, we've been allocated different amounts for five years. So we're in year three currently. So year one, we did a project, a lighting project at IVC. We received a million dollars in the Prop thirty-nine funds from the state chancellor's office. In addition to that, we received a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from the IOU, which is Southern California Edison, and that project garnered us an energy savings of about sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Year two was a project at Saddleback College. That year we received, the last year, we received about seven hundred and one thousand dollars, additionally sixty-three thousand from the IOU incentive, and that project actually had additional savings, and so that one was about sixty-eight thousand a year in energy savings. We're in year three currently. This year, we're getting just under eight hundred thousand dollars for an exterior lighting project. We anticipate getting about twenty-four thousand dollars back from San Diego Gas and Electric, and that will garner us sixty-six thousand dollars a year in savings. So over three years so far, so we're in year three of a five-year program, we've received two-point-five million dollars in funding from the state chancellor's office for projects to reduce our energy. In addition, we've received another two hundred thousand from the IOUs and achieved significant energy savings. So on these, the cost from the state chancellor's office wasn't sufficient to fund them, so the colleges have put in approximately sixty to seventy thousand dollars per project. And based on the projects that we've done, the anticipated five-year energy savings is approximately one million dollars for the first three years, for the first three projects over five years. So I'm going to turn it over to John Ozerovich.
Good evening. Since nineteen ninety-five, Saddleback College has been utilizing reclaimed water for irrigation of its landscape areas. That accounts for approximately seventy-five percent of the water use on the campus. That has saved us over the twenty years, over two-hundred-and-sixty-five million gallons of potable water, which will approximately provide water to a hundred and eighty-nine households per year. In addition, we've had savings of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars per year for using reclaimed water instead of potable, and over the twenty years, that's totaled out to one-point-five million dollars. We're also looking at ways to reduce the use of reclaimed water. We have installed smart irrigation controllers that are computer-controlled and also have water-sensing devices in them that measure the water content of the soil, and based on that, will either activate or deactivate the sprinkler systems. Our standard for, no, thank you. Our standard for landscape design has also been changed in that we're specifying drought-tolerant and native Californian species in all of our landscape design. We reduced the turf areas on the campus and replaced it with drought-tolerant plants and Californian native plants. And we're also using mulching mowers that help retain the water in the soil. Here we have some pictures of, of examples of where we have replaced the existing landscaping on the campus with some drought-tolerant species and Californian native species. We're also looking at ways of saving potable water. The main project that we have on campus to accomplish that at Saddleback is to convert the makeup water for the new cooling towers in our central plant by changing that from potable water to reclaimed water. By doing that, we should save somewhere between four to six million gallons of potable water each year, which will reduce the usage of potable water on the campus by thirty And that's enough to provide water to eighty-six households for a full year. We're also looking at utilizing reclaimed water in the toilets and urinals in new construction projects, and that's being implemented in the design for the new restrooms at the stadium. Now, here we have some pictures of the cooling towers where we will be using reclaimed water and also a absorption chiller, which I'll be talking to you about in a moment. As far as alternate energy strategies and energy conservation, Saddleback College has a long history of being involved in those kind of endeavors. All the way back in nineteen eighty, we were recognized by San Diego Gas and Electric for our efforts. And then again, in nineteen ninety-one, we were recognized for our continued efforts in energy reduction, and in two thousand and one, we were nominated by the San Diego Business Council for Excellence in Energy Conservation. In two thousand and three, the college installed a one-point-five megawatt cogeneration system. What this does, it generates the electricity for the campus. It provides most of the electricity that's needed during the non-peak winter hours, winter months, and then during the summer, we supplement that with utility-generated power. But our cogeneration system provides over eight-point-five million kilowatts of electrical power to the campus each year. The beauty of the system is that the, the generation process is fueled by natural gas, which is a very clean source of energy. And also, this process generates a tremendous amount of heat. This heat is captured and used for several purposes on the, on the campus. The heat is, converts water into hot water that's used to heat our swimming pool. It's also used, the hot water is also used to provide the heat into most of the campus buildings. And amazingly, the, the hot water is sent to our absorption chillers, which convert the hot water to cold water and is used to air-condition the buildings. So from one source of energy, we get electricity, we get heating, and we get cooling. And this year also, we, we added one more additional absorption chiller to the central plant, and that will provide us the capacity to cool the new sciences building. This, this system, not counting how much we're going to be saving on the new sciences building, saves us about four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year. And that varies each year based upon the cost of natural gas, which for the last several years has been very low. So we've been, we've been very fortunate for that. So it's, it's well-paid. The system's been paid for many times over. Also, this year, we, we did some additional upgrades to the central plant. We installed the new cooling towers, which are much more energy-efficient. We put in some more efficient heat exchangers, so we get more heat out of the water. And we also redesigned the pumping systems for our hot water and chilled water distribution systems that are much more efficient. In addition, we, as Mary mentioned, we did the, we changed out the parking lot lighting from metal halide to LED fixtures, and those, those two efforts should reduce our energy a further eleven percent per year and save us approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. Now, I'd like to introduce Jeff Herbert from Irvine Valley College.
Well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about what we're doing at Irvine Valley College in energy and water conservation. You know, what's great about this exercise is it really makes you kind of go back and recount everything you've done on the campus, landscaping and, you know, water conservation, but also on energy conservation, and you kind of forget what you've done, but, but it's pretty amazing over the years what you've been able to accomplish on the campus. The other thing that's great about what we're doing in conservation efforts is everybody gets behind it. So the students love it, the staff loves it, the faculty loves it. They get behind it with, with their programs, and the, and the botany professors have transplanted planters into butterfly gardens and all sorts of things. So it's a, it's a great opportunity on the campus to get everybody involved, and like I said, there's no, there's no loss of passion for something like this. So in water conservation, we've done things, a twofold kind of strategy in taking the potable water, the kind of the mandatory uses, and converting showerheads to low-flow showerheads and things like, you know, we're not washing vehicles like we used to, not washing windows as much as we used to, things like that. As far as reclaimed water, we're doing as much diverting of potable water to reclaimed water. Obviously, all of our landscaping, as Brandy mentioned, is on the reclaimed water. We're doing all of our power washing of sidewalks and streets with reclaimed water. So there's a lot of uses. We're converting as much as our landscaping as we can to drought-resistant plants, trees, and shrubs. So, gosh, in two thousand and fourteen alone, we diverted over forty-eight million gallons of potable water, what would have been potable water, to reclaimed water. So that's six-hundred-and-eighty-five households for an entire year. These are some of the pictures of what we're, how we're converting our landscaping, and a kind of a secondary effect, as it turns out, our LEED groundskeeper is, is a great kind of landscape architect, and he draws up these areas, purchases the plants and trees. of landscape architect, and he draws up these areas, purchases the plants and rocks, and he's done amazing things with our landscaping, as you can see in those pictures. For energy conservation, of course, we're retrofitting existing electrical and mechanical systems with energy-saving solutions and maintenance programs. In two thousand and four, we converted our heart gym to photovoltaic panels, solar panels. They provide sixty kilowatts of power, saving approximately three thousand dollars a year in energy for the gym. The big project we did was converting our high-pressure sodium lights to LED lights all across the campus. So it's over a fifty percent savings, a reduction in power, converting to sixty-five thousand dollars of savings on our energy bills, and a maintenance savings of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, we were changing light bulbs constantly, and with LEDs, most of them have a ten-year lifespan, so it's a huge savings in maintenance. That project did receive an honorable mention at the state chancellor's sustainability award, so that was a great outcome. As far as HVAC upgrades, you can see the savings, over seven thousand dollars a year in energy savings just on one building alone of an HVAC upgrade. And then we have future plans for more buildings with the same thing. These are some examples of sustainable projects. I mentioned the students and the staff converting existing landscaping areas to, you know, different gardens that are drought-tolerant, replacement of antiquated boilers with new energy-efficient models. I mentioned the lighting projects. Those are some of the examples of sustainable projects. And these are some of the sustainable, yeah, sustainability training and assessment agencies that we use on the campus. Next, if there's any questions for the presenters, you can ask those now.
I have a request to speak from trustee Lang.
Yes, first of all, I want to commend all of you and applaud you on your efforts for all of the tremendous savings that you've created for our district. I think, you know, it's really an eye-opener to see all of the energy savings that we've managed to achieve. One aspect of this, though, that I was maybe a little bit more interested in hearing about, which you touched on in a few of the comments, was sort of going back to our students. You mentioned sort of some tangential areas, biology, using, you know, in using this, but I'm wondering if there aren't some more formal programs on sustainability itself that our students, you know, some sort of a specific curriculum? It seems like this is an area that's really going to be growing, tremendous need for it. I'm just wondering, you know, do we have programs of that nature going on at our schools now? I know we did the project over at the Great Park with Castles Soul. I thought that was a terrific learning opportunity, and I'm just wondering how we can do more of this and tie it back to students in the classroom.
So you're asking a question that's a little out of our area of expertise, as we're not really in charge of curriculum, but certainly there are people in the audience who could answer that question for us. Perhaps Dr. Justice, if you might come and mention what's in your curriculum? Or Dr. Worley also. Dr. Justice is at IVC, and Dr. Worley is here at Saddleback. I'm sure both of those curriculums have some pretty exciting information for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brandy, and thank you, board of trustee members. So at Irvine Valley College, we do have some formal programs. There's one in biology, which runs our so-called bees garden, and this is a sustainable environment where curriculum in biology and botany are taught in the laboratory, the outdoor laboratory is actually the campus itself. So that program's been underway for some time. We also are trying to launch a sustainability program. We do have course curriculum in that, but the target audience for that is a rather borderline wage-level program. And without an actual recycling center to hook into, that program is on hold for at least a year until IVC's recycling program relocates. I believe that's near the Baranca Drive. And so when that happens, you have a sustainable sustainability program, where the students, the jobs, and everything comes together in a recycling center environment. So those are the two things that we have at Irvine Valley College. Questions? Thank you.
I'm Kathy Worley with Saddleback. I've got Blake with me. We've got a couple of related programs, all of them in the ATAS division, where we do a lot of recycling work. We've got an environmental studies program that is a transfer program primarily, but we also have a water recycling program that was approved and is just now getting underway. We've got the horticulture landscape design program, which uses some of the features of sustainability, and, you know, of course, they teach about drought-resistant plants. You want to talk about architecture?
Yeah, we're in our fourth year of offering LEED and sustainable architecture class every summer in our architecture program. We teach about LEED principles, how to do the bean counting, which is part of LEED. We talk about the bigger picture, which is reducing carbon fuels, which means going to things like photovoltaics instead of natural gas to generate electricity. We talk about transportation to the campus. Probably the biggest energy use for this campus is getting people here and then cooling their cars off when they drive away after sitting in hot parking lots. We talk about the urban heat island effect, which is, if you're able to lower the air temperature adjoining our buildings by simple things like planting trees, shading asphalt, those kind of things, you can actually have a huge impact on air conditioning costs because the atmosphere around the campus is much cooler, and on and on and on. That's a summer-long class where we talk about all of those principles. Irrigation, even recycled water, non-potable water, is valuable. It takes energy to move it here, electricity to pump it to the campus. So even reduction of use of the non-potable water is critical. And that means, sorry to say, getting rid of some of the big lawns and things like that, which are so water-intensive. You know, we get twelve to fourteen inches of rain in a good year, not an El Nino year, and a lawn will take forty-three to forty-five inches of irrigation per year. So all of those kind of principles we talk about.
And in ATAS, we also have the automotive program, where they touch on and teach about the different kinds of alternative vehicle fuels that we can use, and SMOG certification is one of the things that we prepare people to do in that program.
Great, thank you.
Are there any questions?
Good. All right. Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. Proud of what we're doing at the district and both colleges. Trustee Lang took part of one of my questions. Three questions. On the student involvement part, have we made any progress on student internships or externships in this area? I know Todd, President Burnett, we had some meetings with the Santa Margarita Water District, which is not our water district, but it clearly includes much of our service area. That was question number one.
Yes. Well, first, with Santa Margarita Water District and other water districts, actually, we do have internships, and actually, students have gone on to get jobs, actually, at those places as well. Yes, part of our environmental studies, horticulture, architecture, automotive, all those, there's not only internships, but once again, job placement opportunities for them in these various fields. One of the growth areas, actually, in Orange County and in this field, is actually environmental studies, believe it or not. So it's a growth area for our college and our programs, and we look forward to getting more partnerships with business, industry, government, et cetera, for internships, jobs, and other curricular additional activities.
Thank you. On the IVC side? And yes, at IVC, we've had a number of internships sponsored by the biology department through the environmental studies and botany program and the sustainability program as well. And that program was actually initiated with a grant, and many of the outcomes were internships for the students.
Great, thank you. I'm just wondering, on the area, we've done a great job, it seems, moving forward on drought-resistant landscaping. How much, are there more, where's Blake, the term ornamental areas, are there, I mean, how many more ornamental areas are there on IVC and Saddleback that could be converted into drought-resistant landscaping? How much acreage are we talking about?
I'd have to look at Google Earth to tell you acreage, but I would say, at this point, we've reduced a very small amount of our turf area. If you looked at some of the photographs in the report, it's a little patch of drought-tolerant plants in front of a huge lawn. I think it's important to keep turf for recreation. You know, the center of the quad is a great place to have that, but other places where it's simply ground cover, swamp, seldom used, seldom walked on, that's a good opportunity to reduce turf area and put in native plants.
Okay. At IVC, actually, back when we did our educational facility master plan, we had a portion of discussion that actually never made it into the plan, for whatever reason, not due to our work, but it's to create a template over the campus to do an entire conversion of the campus and return it to a native plant, kind of an arboretum-style outdoor educational site entirely. So what that means, I don't know what the current percentage is of what our conversion is. Our plan is to get rid of the turf. That seems to be the primary problem. Now, at the same time, the work that we have to do is important, because a big green lawn is conducive to frisbee, soccer, student interactions in between classes. So we don't want to truncate that. So the plan that we do, particularly with the large quad grassy areas, has to be very carefully crafted. So we do have students involved in our sustainability program that's working on that template to help us make that conversion.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it sounds like, I mean, it'd be a great project-based learning opportunity for students to help become involved in the redesign of both campuses.
Yeah, more to add on to it. First, as far as getting rid of the grass, one of the biggest benefits are going to be, we redo the athletic stadium and all of our athletic fields, which will all now be artificial turf. So that's going to be enormous savings in water. In addition to that, as you, to your question before, we still have a long way to go, and John Ozerovich here knows that they're working, in fact, almost every week, there's something new being taken out and more sustainable plantings being put in place or going in.
May I add a however? However, the MUELO that you heard Mary discuss earlier is a measurement of how landscape and irrigation, it's a ratio. And the residential ratio is a point-three, a commercial ratio is a point-four, and because community college and education facilities are considered oases in the community, it's like a point-six to a point-seven. And what that means to the layperson, and me too, is that one is a lawn, and a point-five would be half a lawn and half drought. So we would expect to see lawns in our educational facilities as a place in the community where it would, the oasis feeling would be made available. So we want to be a little careful not to swing the pendulum too far and still have places in our community that are designated for that kind of greenery.
Another caveat is, especially as we're entering the fall, it's cold today, it is fall, that we need to be actually flood-resistant as well. So running PELMEL to ripping out various sorts of water requiring flora is not a good plan when we're on the brink of an, presumably of an El Nino, because we're just going to lose all of our topsoil, make huge mess, not be able to recover, not be able to put anything on. So all of this needs to be a really thoughtful project over long term.
Thank you. Just a final comment, not question. You mentioned it, Todd, I think the stadium is a real opportunity for us to put a comprehensive sustainability plan in place that's really the gold standard for the state. It's a real tremendous opportunity for us. Thank you.
Trustee Wright.
I just wanted to congratulate both colleges for what they've been doing as far as drought-resistant plants and so forth. But I always, but I do have one concern, that's the science math building at Saddleback College. It needs some plants around it. There are just lots of bare areas around the science math building. I was over there today, and I just noticed that these areas are bare, and it doesn't look very good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further requests to speak, thank you very much for your presentation. So at this time, I will entertain any polls on the consent calendar.
Five point eight.
Trustee Wright, five point eight.
Five point one seven.
Trustee Jamal, five point one seven.
Five point one five.
Trustee Lang, five point one five. Trustee Jay, five point one two.
Move the balance of the consent calendar.
A motion for the balance of the consent calendar, and a second.
Second.
No, I got one, thanks. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. Trustee Witt. A unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Okay, so with that, we'll have trustee Wright, five point eight.
Five point eight dealt with the advanced technology and educational park, their first building project. I noticed they only had one bid come in.
Okay, I'll have executive director Brandy Delena explain the process. We did have a pool, which we did an RFP on.
I know, I know you have.
She'll explain exactly how that works.
Okay.
Hi there. So, me again. So, the, anytime we have professional services, we go out for an advertisement and obtain a pool that we can draw from over a period of five years for those services. Our building envelope consultants are very specialized, and there aren't as many of them out there as you might imagine. We did receive three successful proposals, and those three folks are on our pool. When we sent the request for proposals out to our pool, only the one individual did respond. As it turns out, we're very fond of that individual. They do excellent work for us, and we're the firm that stood firm when it was necessary for us to remove the envelope over at the A400 liberal arts building. It was that building envelope consultant's practices that really led us into the removal-replacement. So we're kind of excited, we're really excited, to have this person working for us again over at ATAP. However, I can understand a concern of seeing only one response and wondering if that's best value.
Did you ask the other two if they would submit, or?
We did. We provided them all with an opportunity to submit, and just the one responded. It could be workload. There's a heavier workload now than there was at the time that the pool was originally generated. These folks might be busy. Dr. Lang also, doctor, sorry, David Lang also asked us this question earlier today, and what I agreed to with him is, in the future, if we receive only one proposal, then we will perhaps go out on the street. Instead of just using our pool, we might take a secondary action and go to the street and do a public request for proposals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion from trustee Lang, and a second from trustee Jamal. And he was just louder. All right, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Next, we have five point one two from trustee Jay.
It's on the gifts, and it's on the gifts to the foundation. It's Barbara J., not Parba Joy.
Oh, Billy.
It was Bill's books that I donated.
Such a nitpicker.
We will make that change for the, um, I don't.
It happens all the time. It happens all the time.
I understand you getting my name wrong, but gosh.
Yeah, it was Parva's Joy to donate the books.
All right. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Next, I have 5.15, Trustee Lang.
Yes, I had brought this to the attention, and I thought we would, might have a replacement page on this, but since I don't see it, I'll bring it up now. On the front page of it, it shows the Leonakis change order amount is 17,000, but on Exhibit A, Page 1, it shows the amount of 17,500. So what did we determine was the right situation here?
Yes, our Trustee Lang is correct. On the background memo on 5.15, B should read, replacing the amount of 17,000 to 17,500. So with that correction, the item is correct now.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Lang, second by Trustee Wright. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 5.17, Trustee Jamal.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little agenda challenged today, since I don't have my normal iPad. But I, if I recall, looking at the agenda yesterday, 5.17, I think includes the contract for the McCallum Group, is that correct?
Yes, it does.
I see that they're here? Or no? Is this for, I know it's for state lobbying, our state lobbyists, state lobbying activities now, is this for what duration?
Two years.
To start when?
Two years. It's renewal of the contract for two years.
To start in January of 2016?
I would have to, I would have to.
I know it's a renewal, but.
I would have to pull it. September, two months. Yes, September. It's been, it's on the ratification list, so it was already executed.
And for the same scope, the scope of services, okay. So moved.
A motion for Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Okay, moving on to general action items, I'm gonna go ahead and advance 6.4, our auditors have been waiting patiently.
Thank you.
But we're gonna go ahead and move them up a little bit.
We have Executive Director Kim McCord, who will introduce our auditing firm and discuss the audits for both, not only district-wide audit, but also the foundation's OPEB trust, and I think that's it, right? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I've got from Kristi White's Associates here, Dina Whittington, she'll introduce her associate and go over the reports for you, and we'll be here for questions.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to address the board and the stakeholders and the audience. With me today, I have another supervisor from the firm, Eli Wheeler. He was the in-charge for the foundations and the OPEB fund that was performed. We're happy to be here tonight because we can report that on the district audit report and all of the foundation and the OPEB fund reports that we had no findings in any capacity. The firm is out in the springtime and in the fall. There's three main areas that we look at, both, well, just the financial statements, and then both the federal and state compliance. The federal program that was reviewed today, and there is a mandated rotation process that we have to follow, was the federal financial aid, student aid portion, and both the state and federal programs were fully in compliant. A new reporting aspect of the district financial report this year is that all agencies that participate in both the STIRS and PERS pensions are required to report their proportionate share of the future liability that we are all sharing, as far as the pension not being able to meet what the actuaries, what the experts are saying the potential could be in later years. Part of this is in conjunction with an increased rates for both the employer and the employee for both the STIRS and PERS. For the district here, on page 15, the net position of the district prior to Gatsby 68, or 62, sorry, would have been $542 million. The district's proportionate share of the statewide future liability, for now, would be $136 million, so that's increasing the district's liability, therefore reducing the net position to $464 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
To both of you, we, on the audit committee, have met before and appreciate all your services to the district. I did make a couple of small changes, which I'm judging that Deborah has shared with you in terms of some corrections or typewriters on the report. Okay, so you have that. One of the areas that I wanted to talk to you about is this, obviously, these are our financial statements.
Correct.
So we would be able to put in whatever disclosures, additional disclosures that we wanted to, and I wanted to just get your opinion about the pros and cons of having a footnote disclosure in the financial statement that would talk about our designation of excess basic aid funds for various projects, whether that is a good idea or not a good idea. Obviously, you know, that allocation is entirely discretionary, it could be changed, et cetera.
Right.
Your reaction to that?
I actually was Assistant Superintendent of Business for a K-8 district that was basic aid in North County in San Diego. We did have a lot of board action for designating certain revenues and reserves for items. That's totally fine in that community. We didn't see the need to incorporate it in the financial statements, but if you would like that done, we can definitely incorporate them.
Okay, yeah, I think it's an item for discussion, perhaps, with our, you know, financial folks in the district, further. I think the other question is, obviously, the Gatsby 68 pronouncement had a significant impact on our district, and, you know, created a fairly large liability going forward that wasn't on our financial statements previously. How predictable is that stream of annual payments, I guess, and the liability itself in the future on the STIRS and PERS? Is that a moving target? Is that a fairly reliable number? Just get some reaction to that. The second part of that question is, is there any possibility that those responsible districts could be held liable for more than fair share by some districts, perhaps, that aren't able to fund those liabilities? And then I guess the other question that I would have for our folks, perhaps, is, should we or could we possibly consider setting up a separate trust if we wanted to, similar to what we've done for OPEB, to retire that obligation in a different timeframe from, perhaps, just the number that we get from those systems?
Okay, first of all, we've already been provided, for the next five years, the increase in the rates that all districts, and when I say districts, this also includes water districts, fire districts, law enforcement agencies that participate in PERS. We know what those rates are for the next five years. What's going to change is this liability number, because the experts in Sacramento, they're using actuarial studies, and they're using the same things that, like, life insurance companies use, as far as life expectancies, you know, duration of work, obviously, you know, classroom teachers may last a little longer on their job than, say, a beat cop, those kinds of things are all a variable. So the liability number is gonna be changing annually going forward, but that's not what actually is getting paid or deposited to STIRS and PERS on both your behalf and the employee's behalf. And then the second part of, what was your second question? I know you had three.
I did. So I asked about the predictability.
Yes.
I think you've addressed that, asked about the notion of maybe setting up a separate trust that we would fund on, perhaps, our own timeframe, if you will, and also the liability issue.
Okay, as far as setting up a separate trust, the OPEB, which is your retiree health benefits, that's something that's a liability specific to your district, where the STIRS and PERS, it's a state-level agency. So the, there was a provision for districts to use an irrevocable trust to meet that liability for the health benefits. There's a thousand districts in the state, and you're one of the few, which is a good thing, you should be commended, that have actually had the forethought to set the money aside for future liabilities, because it's gonna be very real, and that's something that the state's not gonna be able to bail us out from. As far as some districts having an unproportionate share of the liability, I don't see that happening, and we don't have any precedence in any other arena of that coming through.
Could I add, as far as planning purposes, we could determine as a one-time recommendation this year, that we could assist and have a recommendation, just like we do for, on the actuary report, for instance, for the OPEB trust, we could create a holding account or contingency for the purpose of funding the PERS and STIRS rate increases that are gonna significantly impact the colleges. So we could have that discussion and come back with a recommendation and take a look at that.
Be interested in your take on that.
All right, thank you very much. We always like no fines.
Moving acceptance for review.
I have a motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jamal. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Moving back to 6.1, this is our equity plan report presentation.
My name is Linda Fontanella, I am the Vice President of Student Services for Irvine Valley College. Tonight, I'm joined by Lisa Wang, Senior Research and Planning Analyst, and Makiko Kumasaka, Director of Outreach. And thank you for giving us time to present a brief overview of the college's student equity plan. We also have with us a few of our colleagues and fellow student equity task force members who are here to support us and make themselves available to address any questions regarding specific student populations they are working with. We have Professors Sumit Serpa, Dan DeLoret, Jeff Wilson, and over at the desk, Dr. Kathleen Smidler, who has been integral in developing our plan. We also have staff member Ken Lera, the Assistant Dean of Financial Aid and Student Support Services, and Maria Nunez, who refused to come up. She's our CSEA representative. Please allow me to give you just a brief history of the student equity plan, because I think it's really important to state this in one of our presentations tonight. The California Legislature in 1991 charged all segments of public education with providing educational equity through environments in which persons had a reasonable chance to fully develop his or her potential. That's in our Ed Code 66010. In keeping with this requirement, in 1992 to 2002, the California Community College Board of Governors adopted a student equity policy entitled "Five Regulations" and a planned template to ensure that groups historically underrepresented in higher education have an equal opportunity for access, success course completion, English as a second language, ESL and basic skill completion, and completion of degrees, certificates, and transfers to baccalaureate degree-granting institutions. In June 2014, in recognition and support of the equity and success for all students, the state also provided $70 million specifically earmarked to close achievement gaps. Irvine Valley College's allocation was $380,000. In June of 2015, the governor and the legislature appropriated an additional $70 million for student equity planning, bringing the total available statewide equity plan to $140 million. Our allocation this year at Irvine Valley College is $670,000. In 2015-16, allocations were based on student equity funding formulas, which includes factors of annual FTS, high-need students, educational attainment and residential zip codes, poverty rates, unemployment rates, and additional factors for foster youth. There is no match from the colleges on our student equity funds. In 2012, Education Code 78216 created a requirement whereby the student support and success program, the Triple SP Plan, which you've heard a lot about, is coordinated intentionally with the student equity plan. And the chancellor has given us, the chancellor's office has given us until December 31st of 2016 to expend our new funds. Faculty and staff at IVC are extremely excited about the student equity plan, as this plan offers the students and our college additional resources to help students who are failing to now succeed. You received and approved the 2014 plan, and this year, we are asked by the chancellor's office to update and revise our plan using the same 2007, 2008 data, and to include special populations, such as the veterans, foster youth, students with disabilities, and low-income students. This past year, the members of our task force have been very busy establishing baselines, developing curriculum and programs, and implementing the activities identified in the 2014 plan. Activities that were unable to be completed rolled forward and are now noted in the 2015 plan, as well as new activities. The task force meets on a regular basis to exchange ideas, discuss new data, and give updates on specific activities. Our task force grew from a small core of seven members in 2014 to 24 members in 2015. This increase in the task force membership is a true indication that Irvine Valley College is serious and committed to ensuring our students benefit from the resources offered by this plan. I'll now turn it over to Lisa Wang.
Thank you, Dr. Fontanella. To develop an equity plan in order to promote success for all students, regardless of demographic characteristics, the chancellor's office provided colleges a template that focuses on five success indicators: access, course completion, ESL and basic skills completion, degree and certificate completion, and transfer. To ensure equity for all students, IVC conducted campus-based research on these success indicators, which entail the disaggregation of data by gender, ethnicity, age, disability status, and economically disadvantaged status. Building on the data that originally was pulled to develop our three-year plan, IVC focused on the inclusion of foster youth and veteran students in its updated two-year, year-two plan, as required by the chancellor's office. To analyze the data and ultimately identify disproportionate impact, we continue to utilize proportionality index to maintain consistency throughout IVC's three-year plan. To briefly explain proportionality index, you'll see here the transfer indicator data disaggregated by race. We divide the percent of the student subgroup represented in the outcome by the percent of the same student subgroup represented in the initial cohort to yield a proportionality index. A proportionality index of one or greater indicates that there is no equity gap. Less than one indicates the existence of an equity gap, with the subgroup being less prevalent in the outcome group. So here, we see that Hispanic students are severely impacted. impacted with a proportionality index of .649. Following the guidelines of the University of Southern California's Center for Urban Education, IVC focuses on areas with a proportionality index of less than .70, which indicates a large equity gap, also known as disproportionate impact. This table outlines all of the student populations identified as severely disproportionately impacted. We focus on foster youth, students across all five success indicators due to the limited historical data we have at the college, and more importantly, the research studies that show low completion rates among this student population. Other groups identified as being adversely impacted are veterans, African-American students, students ages 35 years old and older for basic skills completion, students between the ages of 25 to 29 for degrees and certificate completion, and Hispanic students. Members of the task force meet regularly to discuss the needs of these impacted students and developed activities to ensure the equitable opportunity to student success. And now, I would like to turn it over to Mikiko to summarize some of our activities and our budget.
IVC is currently addressing and will continue to address all five success indicators through research and outreach. Research is the foundation for every part of the Student Equity Plan. For the first success indicator, access, we identified foster youth and veterans as disproportionately impacted populations. This year, we hired a foster youth liaison who has identified the number of foster youth on campus and will expand our services into a comprehensive, one-stop service. The academic 2015-2016 year, the center will hire a mental wellness counselor to serve new and returning veteran students. The total budget allocation for this indicator is $120,836. ESL ages 35-plus and English for African-American students ages 40 to 49 have been identified as populations who are disproportionately impacted for ESL and basic skills completion. This year, a non-credit ESL curriculum will be implemented, and new software will be purchased for language acquisition. For African-American students, we are seeking to invite the Minority Male Community College Collaborative, M2C3, to research and identify how IVC might support African-American students' completion. This initiative will also seek to expand English courses through evening and weekends. National research has indicated the importance of faculty mentoring in retaining students of color. A discipline-specific faculty mentoring program will be initiated for students. The total budget allocation for this indicator is $124,473. Degree and certificate completion for students ages 25 to 29 have been found to have been disproportionately impacted. A new reentry center will be established. The basis for the center will be based on research on why this population is not succeeding and what support they need to complete. The total budget allocation for this indicator is $20,271. Latino students have been identified as disproportionately impacted in the transfer process. This year, a successful Latino transfer night was implemented. We will continue this program as well as a college tour. The total budget allocation for this indicator is $33,290. Finally, IVC will be meeting the needs of disproportionately impacted students through multiple activities campus-wide. These campus-wide initiatives range from cultural competency conference, research, outreach, and student life programs. The total budget allocation for this indicator is $371,173. The total 2015-2016 SEP budget is $670,000. Thank you.
And there's our timeline for development. We're sorry we may have taken too long. If you have any questions, we would be happy to address them now.
Do you want to do questions for IVC now, or you want to wait until Saddleback and then do them at the end?
I'd rather do them at the end.
Okay, waiting? All right. Go ahead and let Saddleback go, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Don't leave if we have questions.
Good evening. Juan Avos, Vice President of Student Services at Saddleback. One of the advantages of going second is that all of the foundation has already been said. It's the same program, same methodology, same approach, just different populations and different efforts. We've been very fortunate from the beginning. We've had over 30, 40 people involved in this project. When we first kicked it off, we created groups under every outcome area, led by a faculty member with folks who are interested in the areas and with content. So, we have all those individuals represented here today, and so I'm going to pass it over to our lead person, who's going to give a general overview in terms of some of the key elements we're doing, some of the key populations we're working with, and then going on timeline, and then we'll ask for questions. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you very much for having us here. My name is Eifan Rangel. So, like Dr. Avos said, and thanks to IVC for setting the groundwork, but won't go over much of the history. The five groups that we went over is access, course completion, ESL, basic skills, degree certificate completion, and transfer. Target populations were the gender, ethnicity, age, economically disadvantaged, student disabilities, and this year, veterans and foster youth as well. Within access, the major disproportionality that we found for this year, it continued to be with age and economic disadvantage, but also veterans and foster youth. Within each one of these categories or subgroups, we do have activities planned out and interventions for each one of those. One of the big ones from the 2014-2015, major disproportionality within access was age, and one of the activities that we did do for the 2014-2015 that we implemented and been working with is hiring a program outreach specialist. And up to date, I spoke to the person who's overseeing that position, and right now, we have 300 and over 380 students that have been enrolled ages 46 and up. And Saddleback, our program outreach specialist, has represented Saddleback College in the outreach department by attending at least 80, up to date, 86 events in the community, whether it be boys and girls clubs, business fairs around the community, churches and high schools, high school parent nights and stuff. So, for course completion, one of the disproportionality was with ethnicity, African-Americans. Some of the activities that we're looking into implementing or looking into for this year is looking at cohort models such as a first-year experience or learning communities, providing more outreach to peer mentoring between our African-American students who have completed courses within, pairing them up with other students in the classrooms. With ESL basic skills, disproportionality was with age, so age tends to be a big factor with our major disproportionality at Saddleback. A way we provided outreach or implemented activities for the 2014-2015, which we will continue for this year, 15-16, because it's been working for our students, is providing extended hours in the LRC. So, we're open earlier, we're open later, and Saturdays for a lot of our students in that age category. For degrees and certificate completion, major disproportionality, again, age from 20 up to 49. We do have a peer mentoring program that we developed in 2014-2015. It's been working really good. It's, a lot of our students are going towards that. For our Hispanic population, we have five mentors who have connected with at least 100 students throughout the 2014-2015 year, so it's something that we are looking to continue for 2015-2016 year. For transfer, disproportionality, Hispanic, and age, again, and we're looking into doing more, getting more qualitative research and data. We do have a lot of quantitative data provided by the research, but we're looking more at the qualitative. We're looking into mentoring program as well. And here's our timeline. This plan, we, up to date, I think we have 46 on campus participating in the Student Equity Plan. We've presented to Academic Senate, Classified Senate, ASG, and opening up for any of our faculty, staff, or students to participate in each one of these core groups, whichever they would like to participate in. It's our core group. Questions?
Okay. Trustee Whit.
Actually, my question was for the IVC presenters, and on page 10 for the IVC, okay. I wanted to ask you, what were the qualifications? I noticed that you're going to have a mental wellness counselor. So, what are those qualifications for a mental wellness counselor?
I don't have the exact qualifications, and our Director of Health and Wellness is not here tonight, but this is a counselor who has been on board for a while now, who is actually helping our veteran student population.
Okay.
And just to add one more piece to this, he did do a presentation for all of the staff and faculty in Student Services just this past Friday on students who are in crisis and identifying students who may be on the verge of committing suicide. So, that was a very, very important presentation that he did for us.
Thank you.
Is that all? Trustee Whit?
Yes, it is.
All right. Trustee Lang.
Yes. One of my questions, actually, for both groups. I think I heard in the introductory thoughts that all of the costs associated with this are paid for by the grant. Is that correct? Okay. So, my question is, is that, first of all, how will whatever final results we determine inform how we do business beyond the grant period, and what sort of ongoing costs will we have and need to bear as institutions after the grant monies are exhausted?
The approach we've had at Saddleback, you know, we've been talking about student success for quite some time now, right? And even though these monies are earmarked with very specific purpose in mind, we've approached them with the same mindset that we have when it comes to just student success in general. So, all of our projects did a couple of things. One is it built on some of the strategies that have been sort of laid out in our strategic plan under goal number two, which is under student success. It builds off of the work that we have with our student, our Student Success Committee. We're leveraging all of the areas where the dollars, so I guess an answer to your question is, we're identifying what the issues are, right, and then what the best approach is, and then having the dollars aligned with those plans. So, the planning are things that we would normally want to do anyway, but we're utilizing the money to fund that to do a couple of things. One, reach out in those ways. In some areas, we're piloting some specific programs. At Saddleback, we're piloting some mentorship programs with students, trying to leverage that. So, at the same time as providing the service, we're trying to find out the things that work. We're experimenting with a term that we sort of phrase academic coaches. They're not counselors, they're not classified staff members, but individuals that can work with students, help them on a success path. So, for now, it's, you know, definitely moving on the things that we believe work, then the money is, you know, so our planning is driving our work. The money facilitates that, but if the money were to go away, these are still all of the initiatives we would be invested in, because these are the things we found that would work. So, it's, we're trying to have one integrated conversation, so that it's not that we're doing things just for the equity plan and just for some of these other programs. So, it's all guided by our strategic plan. We're just weaving it together. I don't know if that answers your question.
Not really.
Okay.
Well, I guess one concern that I have is, is that in some of these areas, it looked like the cohort sizes were pretty small. Particularly, in, actually, in the SCC report, you couldn't, except for one page where I saw some numbers, I wasn't able to tell what the cohort sizes were. In IVC's case, I thought that was laid out a little bit better, but some of the cohort sizes looked to be pretty small. So, I'm wondering, are we throwing money at a problem that's not a big problem in this district? In addition, you know, you cited those PI ratios, and I think there was only one area that I saw on the one page that you presented, you know, for Hispanic students that had a decent cohort size and clearly needed improvement. And so, that is an area, obviously, we need to concentrate on, but I didn't get that impression in many of the other areas. And the other thing that I understand is that, for example, foster youth are very hard to identify. So, we don't know what kind, we may not even know what the cohort size or whether that is an issue at all, and yet, we're going to spend money on this grant, and I heard we were going to hire a counselor to do that, and I guess in my own mind, I'm not sure that's justified.
I think there's a couple of different things here. Maybe the researcher could speak to some of this. The cohort sizes in the research, there's very specific data sets that are being used to do the research on. That's a byproduct of how large that research base is, not the populations we're serving. So, the numbers you're looking at are coming from a very specific data set. They're not necessarily reflective of all the students we're serving. Can you speak to that a little bit?
But do we know from the data size that we have that it is a significant enough population from us, or is that something that you're saying we'll learn once we get through with the study?
At IVC, we did take the number of students within the initial cohort into consideration. So, we focused on areas where the cohort was a number of 30 students or more from a statistical standpoint. That way, we know that the findings of the data are not a result of just random. We want to ensure that the number is large enough within the cohort, as you mentioned, so that the data is reliable. Otherwise, if it's less than 30, the data is unreliable and cannot be generalized to the larger student population. So, we did take the cohort size into consideration. So, you may notice areas where student populations are disproportionately impacted, but we do not address or focus on those student populations in our plan due to the cohort size.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, when we ran the data for the cohorts in 2007-2008, they were, as we know, much smaller than some of the student populations that we are serving today. For example, you brought up the foster youth. We had little to no data on foster youth, because we weren't collecting it at the college. Since then, we have started collecting data. We estimated that we had about 112 foster youth on campus three years ago, but we were only giving about five students per year financial aid. By hiring the adjunct counselor who has a background in working with foster youth, he has currently, in the last four months, gone out and identified 78 foster youth on campus. He held a workshop for them. He's taking them on guided tours to other, to four-year institutions. And so, we believe by hiring this individual, it is going to pay off in the long run for us.
Thank you.
Kathy Smidler.
David, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Cohort size-
Cohort size or population size n completely is is so important in analyzing data. However, in the defense of looking at groups and paying attention to numbers about groups that are clearly too small to be have valid statistics, we can still identify that the group does exist and they may need help. And so in, certainly at IVC, and I suspect at Saddleback as well, often, we gather them together. And even though we're not, we can't say that they are the same group, we can say, well, the kinds of things that we can use to help this larger group for which we have valid statistics will almost certainly also help these other folks that are in groups that are too small to be to have valid numbers. And so sometimes, functionally, we push them together, even though statistically, clearly, we cannot.
The other part of that is, while all the activities that are being funded have to be addressing the specific population in the area of disproportionate impact, the benefits of the effort aren't exclusive to that group. So the investment is going far beyond that group. You heard today that one of the approaches towards addressing the older population when it comes to course completion is providing some enhanced funding to have the LRC open earlier in the day, later in the evening, and on weekends. We don't stand in front of the door and prevent people from walking through unless they are of that age group. So it's open to everybody. How we how we honor our commitment is we let those individuals know that we've created this opportunity specifically for them. So we're reaching the population, but others get to benefit as well. The effort with the peer mentorship program, wherever we can, wherever we're able to fund a program, we're funding it in part with SEP dollars. Where we could do triple SP, we do that. And where we could do general fund, we bring the three sources together and then offer it up to the college as a whole. So the investments are going, yes, to the targeted group, but to the college population as well.
Yes. My question is for Saddleback. Under the ESL Basic Skills Completion, I noticed that your plan for activity is to provide extended hours in LRC. And I know that currently, this year, the hours have extended. And I was wondering two questions. Is this for the LRC as a whole or just tutoring services specifically for ESL students? And also, would these extend, would this extended hours be the current extension that's already happening right now?
Yes, to the, I mean, so the fund that is going to have extended hours for the LRC is is something new. Last year, we didn't have those hours on Saturdays. And and that we're opening earlier and closing late. And so, like Dr. Avalos mentioned, it is for the target group. However, we are open, so anybody can walk through the door and benefit from those services.
So it's the LRC in general? The the building as a whole is open?
Yes.
Okay. And that's what the current hours that they already have now? This is already a result of this extension?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know that a lot of students still, I know the hours, Saturdays and Fridays, it closes at two. And a lot of students are honestly left scrambling to crowded bookstores and coffee shops and stuff like that for for a place to study. Because as much as it says that that's for people working hours and stuff like that, it's still not enough of reasonable hours for students to go, especially students working. I remember when I was working at the same time, I found virtually no time where the LRC was open when I was working. Maybe when I got off at six, and I would go back home, and I would maybe have an hour at the LRC at most to study. Is there something preventing us from extending the hours even more? Because I know this is a really essential part of student success. And when I was campaigning, a lot of students, this was one of their primary concerns.
And so the effort is there to to continue to, you know, to have the center open and to extend the hours. One of the concerns, one of the challenges that we had in wanting to to go even, you know, later, like six o'clock, or it's or Sundays. It's because we do have faculty who manage the tutoring, you know, not manage, but they're there to help the students. We don't have that many faculty who, you know, who'd want to be there on Saturdays and Sundays as we would like to.
Could we open it up to hiring? Is it, are we like restricted to academic?
And that's definitely something that we can continue to to push forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Jamal.
Along the lines of, first of all, thank you for your presentations. Along the lines of, I think, trustee Lang. Just thinking bigger picture now. If you had limited resources, and we do, I looked at, I guess, the Saddleback presentation at five areas, access, course completion, ESL, basic skills, degree and certifications, and transfer. Where should we devote our resources? What's in of those five areas? Where's the greatest need?
Depends on the population.
Well.
We're going to look at the highest disproportionality. But one of the areas that it seems to, and we don't have data yet, because that's something that we're going to engage in January. But one of the things that we see that is is very beneficial to our students is the concept of having a student success coach. And so that person would target all the different indicators and the students who are in those areas to to bring them in and to find out what is going on with them. You know, what else can we do to to help them succeed? So it's very targeted. So that I I would say if if we were to spend that much, you know, if we're going to invest money, that would be one of the areas. And also, the other one is the doing the outreach to the different populations. And then with the vets, you know, one of the things that the data didn't show last year was we didn't, we didn't have very good tracking for vets. So the population in the data was very small. As we continue to move, we're investing more money and research to really find out what the data is and to really help our vets. Because we don't see it in the data yet, but we know that it's there. I hope that helped.
A little bit. I think it's a question also for the college presidents as well. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a question. We're scheduled to approve this tonight. Is there a deadline that you have to meet as to when this has to be submitted to the state? I know our approval is part of the process. But what's the timeline for the state's requirement?
December eighteenth.
Awesome. Is this just for review?
No, it's for approval.
No, it's for approval. So here's the problem I have with that. So your presentation was excellent. In fact, part of it was, we saw before when you you were here about a year ago with it. And so one of the things I have an issue with is not seeing if there's been any change or if it was just a re-presentation of the the data. Because I know you've been starting some things. And it would be interesting to see if there's already been shown improvement. And I don't see that. I don't get that. And that that's, that's something I'd like to have known. But I guess the biggest problem I have is we've got two copies of this that were set up here for us to read tonight. There's not one for every member. We didn't get it electronically in advance. And this is your plan. This is the plan that we have to approve. I don't have time to read this tonight. And half the board hasn't seen it. It was sitting up here on the edge. So that's why I'm wondering if there's a possibility we can table this to go through the plan. Because we got highlights of it in the presentation, but we haven't seen this until just now. And so if it's not due until the eighteenth, I don't know how much you need to do between us approving and then. But if it has to be approved tonight, it has to be approved tonight. I I'm going to vote for it because I don't want us to not do it. But this was not something we've gotten before.
With all your respect, we did submit it. I mean, I have, where we did the exhibits, we submitted that, you know, we went through the process for you guys to have a copy. What was it? Two weeks ago, you know, went into docket. So we did submit it. And and I have emails that went forward. So I'm not sure where the breakdown happened. But from our perspective, you know, from Saddleback, I know that we we did submit the documents that needed to be submitted.
Okay.
All right. Chancellor Porter.
Okay. The the lack of a copy of this for every board member was not the result of what the people here reporting to you tonight did. They submitted it all. So each college's report was about a hundred pages plus what looks like a PowerPoint presentation that that you see there. So it was a lot of material. So before we sent that out in the in the board packet, we asked, well, what is it exactly that the board needs to approve? Because this is too much material for them to get through. And so the miscommunication, I guess, is that what what looks like a PowerPoint presentation was the report that needs to be approved. And so there was some breakdown there. And then we just provided several copies here in case anyone wanted to look at those large copies. That's about the best explanation I can give you.
But again, looking through this, if if our job is to approve the plan that's going to get submitted to the state, this is the plan. Am I correct? The PowerPoint is is a great summary of the plan, but it isn't the plan. This is the one that has all the signatures and it has all the the details with the data totally broken down. And I get it. The presentation's great. But I think the miscommunication, according to the chancellor, is that this was not indicated to us as something we needed to know for tonight. But in fact, if this is what we're approving, this is absolutely what we needed to know. And so I don't know how to rectify that at this point other than saying, if you want to read it, read it real quick. But I I'm at a loss for 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 what to do about it.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I'm not sure it will will help your point. But what we did do when we got to this juncture is ask the question, as the chancellor mentioned, is there the proper information in the PowerPoint to satisfy the recommendation that the board approved the plan? And I think both teams agreed that that was the case. So what you find in the plan is incredibly detailed portions that is actually going to be involved in some of the action that will take place. But what they have done is given you a very good representation of what is inside the report and by your approval will satisfy the requirement.
Okay. Trustee Jamal.
Well, we're not Congress. We actually read stuff on on this board. So it 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 strikes me that what should have happened, and I'm glad you caught this, I didn't even know that that was sitting behind me, that for future reference between the colleges and the district, I suggest it's okay to have the full report as an attachment and then also attach what will be the PowerPoint presentation. What was delivered was appropriate, I think, was your presentation, which was a Cliff's Notes version or a summary of the more detailed version. And I think it was okay, especially for those who use us, those of us who use iPads, we get as a PDF, to include it as as an attachment, even in the hard copy board books as well. So I think that's probably, sounds like what happened. And it strikes me that what we're approving is what's in your hand there. We're not approving the, we're not approving the PowerPoint presentation. We're approving that plan. Right?
We got it. We just didn't get it till tonight. And half the people didn't know it was there. I just happened to notice it as I was walking up and said, oh, what's this? So again, too late to do anything about it tonight, just for future reference. But if we, you know, it doesn't look like we can table this. It looks like we need to approve it tonight so that you have the opportunity to get it done by the eighteenth. And I'm okay with that with reservations.
Hi. Just one other comment. I for one really appreciate that you do, in fact, read everything. And it's quite clear to me that you do. So thank you all for doing that. I won't, I'll not comment on Congress. But I believe, and people will correct me, I'm sure loudly if I'm wrong, but I believe that this is an update of the current plan. So you've actually already approved the plan. And this is a renewal. This is just an update. So really, it's updating the data, it's modernizing it. But the fundamentals of the plan really haven't changed since the plan that you approved last year. This is the sec, this is for the second year and, I believe, a three-year grant. So it's, yes, you should, yes, you should have had it available. Yes, to all of those things, no disagreement there. But it's not, but it is, in fact, a renewal of an ongoing grant, not the first year of it.
And I think that goes back to my point of getting an update of information, if that's the case. Because, you know, I'm recognizing things, but I'm not 100% sure if the numbers are the same because, you know, it's been a year. But.
And they aren't. That's the whole point.
And and that that's very important. Trustee Lang.
Yes. I I've got other philosophical issues with this process, if you will. But my big issue is not the fact that I don't have the full report. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve submitting the plan from both colleges.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from trustee Wright. And I have a request to speak from trustee Witt.
I just wanted to ask, in the calculations, I just wanted to ask, are these numbers showing us a comparison or an increase or decrease at all from last year? The statistics. I'm just, I just wanted to know.
I believe you're looking at the proportionality index. So it is a comparison of a student subgroup in the outcome compared to the same student subgroup in the initial cohort. So a proportionality index doesn't quite show whether there is a change, but it shows how adversely impacted a particular student population is within the student population.
Okay. I was just looking to see if there was an increase or a decrease.
So the plan does not actually ask to detail in the data section whether there is an increase or decrease. But in the activities worksheets, there may be some detail as to whether there was an increase in student success for a student, a particular student population. So in those sections, that is where the chancellor's office has asked us to detail any evaluation efforts that we have conducted, any additional data that we have compiled. But in the in the data section itself, it is outlined exactly according to the template that the chancellor's office requested the colleges to complete.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So a motion to approve and a second. No more requests to speak. We'll go and vote on the item. An unanimous yes vote, one student advisor yes. Moving on to six point two. Purchase of real property, sales contract between corporation presiding bishop is Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the district on behalf of Saddleback College.
Yes. You have before you an item in which we are asking for your approval to purchase the 1.3 acres of land located outside of Health Center Drive and Marguerite Parkway adjacent to Saddleback College and authorize the finalization and execution by staff of the sales contract between South Orange and the Church of Latter-day Saints.
Trustee Lang.
So in.
Oh, yeah, wait. We need a motion before we can discuss.
Second.
A motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright, trustee Lang.
Thank you. So in asking some questions about this item earlier, I did come to learn that we have not yet completed the environmental assessment and sales reports, which are our responsibility. But our vice chancellor has assured me that before they finalize and execute this contract, that will be done if we approve it tonight. So I think that's just important for for us to know. Thank you.
As part of the due diligence process, we'll be doing a phase one environmental study and ensure that everything's A-OK. We don't intend to build We don't intend to build on the property, so a phase one environmental is the adequate level of environmental.
Okay. I just, is there, you presented this to us a while ago. Any significant changes from what was presented? Okay.
No.
I didn't see any, or I didn't catch any. Okay. So with that, we'll go and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. 6.3. Office lease for Crown Valley Financial Plaza for Workday project space.
Yes. You have before you a lease of space for a property on Crown Valley Financial Plaza for the Workday project space between South Orange and the Reef Crown Valley LLC. And we're asking your approval for the form of the office lease and authorize staff to make the necessary final changes to execute the lease. Within your documents, you can see that we have already analyzed alternate spaces, including on both IBC and Saddleback campuses, which they do not have space available for this project. We didn't want to negatively impact instructional areas. And this will actually be less expensive than bringing a portable onto Saddleback College's site and also not create any negative impact to parking. So we are recommending that the board approve this lease this evening.
Okay. Need a motion and a second?
I move.
Motion from trustee Wright.
My second.
Second from trustee Jay. Request to speak from trustee Jamal.
Just want your concurrence again, that you think this is the best fiscal option for the district.
It was less expensive than all the alternates that we had looked at, and with the space that we have looked at, it is the best space for the least expensive rate. So it was recommended by both our consultants and legal, who've also reviewed this, and the Workday project folks. So, yes, I can say that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I grilled the folks in depth on this particular agenda item, but there was one other question. I noticed that in the recommendation, and I don't see anywhere else in the body of this, where it speaks to what funds these are coming out of.
The Workday project. And remember, this is a three to fi, this is a five-year lease. We don't necessarily need to, if we find that we don't need the space, we can sublease the space as well as get out of the lease on an earlier date. So we made sure that those flexibility was in there.
Okay, but the cost of the lease itself is coming out of the technology grant for Workday, or?
The basic aid funding for the project.
It's already been allocated.
It's, we had it set aside for portables, and it's lesser than those costs already.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes vote. Moving on to 6.5. Board policy revisions for discussion and approval. So we got these last month as review and study.
So moved.
Motion from trustee Jamal, second from trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak. We'll go ahead and vote on the item. You must have put in all your edits from last month. You have unanimous yes vote, student advisory yes vote. 6.6. Board policy revisions for review and study.
Move acceptance.
Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Jamal. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Trustee Jamal.
Oh, sorry.
Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. 6.7. Academic personnel actions.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Motion from trustee Milchker, second from trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, abstention and student advisory yes vote. 6.8. Classified personnel actions.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion from trustee Lang, second from trustee Milchger.
Okay.
Seeing no requests to speak, we will vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote, one student advisory yes. Reports, we have 7.1. Speakers, any questions on that? No. Let me get through these.
So moved.
No, we don't need a motion, just...
Just do that.
7.2. Basic aid report, any questions on that or any report on that?
No changes from last month.
No changes from last month. 7.3. Monthly financial status report. Questions on that? Seeing none. 7.4. Quarterly investment status report. Seeing none. 7.5. Facility plan status report. Any questions on that? All right, before we move on to reports from administration and government groups...
I had one question about the facilities plan.
Okay.
The one question I had is how we're moving as far as the completion of the ATAC, of the swing space for the task building. Is that going along okay?
Executive Director Brandy Delaney is here tonight, so she'll be able to give you the timeline.
Yes, it's moving along okay. We're scheduled to be complete around December 20th, and they're on target for that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Before we move on to reports from administration and government groups, trustee Jamal.
Mr. President, I move to extend the time of the board meeting to 9:10 PM.
Seconded. We'll go ahead and vote on the item.
Probably say aye.
Have a unanimous yes vote, one student advisory. So now you guys know how much time you have. We'll start with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening. Blake Stevens, president of the academic senate. Three weeks left until finals in fall semester, which is impossible, but it seems to be here almost already. Fall plenary session of the statewide academic senate was 10 days ago. One of the topics of discussion and a resolution was to support chancellor Bryce Harris, recommending to the board of governors that they investigate other accreditation agencies. And Kathy Schmider will also speak on this. Thank you.
All right. Faculty association.
No report.
Irvine Valley College Academic Senate.
Kathy Schmider, Irvine Valley College Academic Senate. Yes, we, it is nearing Thanksgiving, which is nearing the end of the semester, and so everything is happening the way it's supposed to. And many of us from both colleges went to the state plenary, which was very interesting in many respects, not only a lot of discussion about the accrediting agency, as well as accreditation in general. And the chancellor, that is, the state chancellor, asked for people to support his going to the board of governors today. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate voted in very large numbers to support that, that letter. So I did write a letter over the weekend and sent it along to the, to the state chancellor. Excuse me. In which I, in which we supported the recommendations of the task force to recommend to the board of governors that they at least look at other accrediting agencies. I should say that I did edit the suggested letter a little bit, part, not just because of conversations with the presidents. So I said that we have read the report of the 2015 accreditation task force, and we wholeheartedly endorse the recommendations of the task force, specifically to either join with WASC, which is the senior division, or to explore affiliations, affiliation with another regional accrediting agency. That was the suggested letter. I added, and I just want to say this to you, because I think it's very important, unless and until the ACCJC is reformed to satisfy the criteria and characteristics set forth by the task force as necessary for successful accreditation. At the plenary, it was, the discussions were very clear that that was the intention of the task force, even though that's not in fact what the task force wrote down. And so I don't know, I don't know what the reality is. I know what is in the report, and I know what the leaders of the group that wrote that report said to the assorted multitude at plenary last weekend. So my letter reflects what we learned at the plenary and not just a knee-jerk reply to a written report. So I did want to say that and point out that we are not irrational, even when sometimes we disagree with each other. Thank you.
Dr. Barmici.
No report.
Or should I say, you got my R somewhere in that last meeting. Dr. Bougaye.
Happy holiday season coming up, Thanksgiving. Just so you know, HR from last month, the board of trustees, approved a list of faculty positions for recruitment. HR is already gearing up, and so on January 23rd next year, we're going to be going to San Francisco for the job fair and January 30th in Los Angeles. So believe it or not, it's coming up that quickly. So thank you very much.
All right. Vice chancellor, business services.
Yes. Just briefly, I was remiss when we introduced audit firm not to recognize the great staff who worked very hard with the auditors throughout the process. That would be vice chancellors, vice presidents, Devit Kachatin and Carol Hilton, as well as the executive director, Kim McCord, and all their staff, as well as the financial aid directors particularly. You know, there was a lot of compliance items this particular year in the audit, which really attested to the strength of internal controls and the operations in the financial aid offices at both colleges. And as well as the foundations. We've had some findings in the past, and they have done a tremendous job over the last few years, and that should be recognized. So I just want to applaud them for their hard work and dedication to their operations.
And of course, the chair of the audit committee.
And the members.
Okay. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
There's no report. Just want to wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. CSEA.
Thank you, Mr. President. Scott Ferguson-Green, president, chapter CSEA 586. Wanted to draw your attention to this month's magazine, the CSEA magazine called Focus Magazine. This is a special issue. They call it the Veterans Day issue. It's the November/December issue. And they have featured a CSEA member who has served our country, one branch in the military, and they actually have featured a CSEA member from each branch. And it tells them how the military has molded their lives and affected their lives in moving ahead, trying to help people. So not only did they defend their country, but they're in the mode of to helping people in the union. I just wanted to make mention that CSEA certainly sends their condolences to Nahami Gonzalez, the student from Cal State Long Beach. There were members of CSEA Chapter 1 in Long Beach that actually attended the tribute to her yesterday. And so we send our condolences to her family. This is something that isn't new to France. Back in the summer of 1982, in July and August, I actually was in Paris. I had gone to France for the very first time. And while I was there, I was walking along the Left Bank about 10:30, quarter 11 at night. The sun was just starting to set when two bombs went off. And I could hear the bombs, and it did really alarm a lot of people. The terrorists were from Algeria, and they were trying to make a statement in Paris. And so even though that this was a horrible, horrible event that happened over the weekend, it's not surprising. France has always had that particular dealings with having to deal with terrorists for a long time. But France is very strong, they're very resilient people. I actually have family that live in Paris. My cousin Ammarad Marqui and my cousin Lanis Marqui, who's the deputy mayor of Paris from the, Paris's 12th district, they live in Paris, and they said that they were shaken. They're all safe, but they said they were very much shaken. However, two days after the actual event, my cousin Lanis sent out a tweet that she encouraged all those to come back to Paris, because people in Paris started filling the streets again. And even though that life is now different, they're not going to let the terrorists win by hiding out. Also, I definitely wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday and a holiday weekend with your friends and family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn at 9:04.